Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council this Monday, September 16th, 2019. It's after 7:30 PM. If you would, please call the roll, Ms. DePaulo.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
It's nice to see everyone here, therefore we have a quorum. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda will remain as presented, looking for approval of the minutes of the September 3rd, 2019 council meeting.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ansel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, then the minutes are approved for September 3rd, 2019. Mayor, welcome.
Hello, President Biden-Dyke and members of council, thank you for being with us this evening and look forward to a good meeting. Just a number of things actually to bring you up to speed on since our last meeting. We had a meeting, a couple meetings of Worcester Growth and also one combined meeting with the Wayne County CIC to talk about RFPs that were submitted for the Horn Nursing Home property. We did receive two fully implemented RFPs, both of them very valid and good RFPs, both the Wayne County CIC and Worcester Growth Community Improvement Corporation weighed the two proposals and then got together and compared notes and we ended up selecting Weaver Custom Homes and Ray &amp; Associates as a combined petition to develop that property at the Horn, Old Horn Nursing Home. It's going to be a mixed use with an office complex for Ray &amp; Associates and then approximately 10 condominium type of units, actually residential units on the property with the possibility of further expansion as time goes on, so really a residential and commercial use blended together. So, we are very excited about that from the Community Improvement Corporations. Abatement of the property of asbestos and other types of hazardous material is underway right now, should be done by the end of this month and then demolition will start and take approximately a month, so by the end of October, we're hoping to have a level site there and I know Weaver Custom Homes is the main, the lead entity in the partnership and they hope to start in yet this fall and start building. So, a great thing for the north side of our public square and we thank everyone that was involved in making that happen, should be a good thing for our city. We've met with business leaders and Ryan Holmes here last Friday to look at our housing market and talk about what is available out there in Ryan Holmes. Specifically, they came and wanted to be a part of this meeting, that doesn't mean they're the only player out there, but they're the ones that presented to that group, so interesting meeting and we are looking into seeing if we can find a home builder that is interested in building homes in Worcester to meet our needs. Did a ribbon cutting, I was observing a ribbon cutting at the Wayne County Event Center for the fair, it was a nice event and a very nice building coordinated with also the start of the fair a week ago Saturday, so I think we should be very pleased to have that facility in Worcester, I think it will add a lot to our downtown and the ability to hold events in our town. We had a meeting with Shannon Waller, who is the new Main Street Executive Director, she will be taking Sandra's place here in November when Sandra will be finishing her 30-plus year legacy here in Worcester, so we are surely thankful to Sandra for all of her efforts in our town and look forward to Shannon leading the charge from moving forward, so we're getting her familiarized with our organization because without a really good interface between the city and Main Street, it does not go well, so we're trying to make transition as smooth as possible. Had the first class of 2019 for the Worcester Citizen Government Leadership Academy, it's about a nine-week course that happens to teach people of our community what we do as a city, so I thank Joel for all of his efforts on that and Lynn for helping make things run smoothly in that category. Was involved in the dedication of a historical marker up at Follis Field for Charles Follis, that happened on Friday afternoon, this guy must have been one heck of an athlete, I'll tell you, it was back in the late 1800s and he played football and became the first African-American professional football player in the United States or probably in the world since football was an American type of activity, so it's pretty neat that he was from our community and went to Worcester High School and the College of Worcester. The Arts and Music Fest was this past weekend downtown, hopefully you got a chance to be a part of that, we thank the Rotary Club and the Art Center and Main Street Organizations and then our city team for helping make that happen, so it's just a fun event for our city. And lastly, I wanted to say a sincere thank you to Tammy Moser, tonight's her last night as a reporter with the Daily Record, she is moving on to other employment and so she will be handing the baton over to Jack Rooney, who will now be covering the city council meetings for us, but I think Tammy's done an excellent job of being fair and balanced in her reporting and she has given a good view of what we do and try to do and yet keeps it, you know, from a balanced view as a spectator to our meetings, so our best to you Tammy and we wish you well. And with that, that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. We do not have any petitions this evening nor communications from the public, no committee reports although we did have an interesting presentation by a gentleman named Jamie Johnson on the upcoming 2020 census, so look for more to come about that because it's very important for funding even at the local level, I know CBDG grants are based on economic data that they obtained for that, so hopefully we can put a good push on and get nearly everyone living in Worcester to fill out their census form. We do have a public hearing, it'll be led by Mr. Sanders, Chairman of the Laws and Ordnance Committee, dealing with changes of the zoning code. So, Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, I guess we'll call this public hearing to order. This evening, this public hearing has been initiated by the Planning Commission of the city regarding text amendments to various portions of the Planning and Zoning Code for the City of Worcester. There's a number of chapters where there has been primarily, let's see, some minor changes or corrections based on when this was passed in 2018. And with that, if there's anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to speak for these changes, I would please step up to the podium and let us know your thoughts. All right, with that, is there anyone wishes to speak against any of these proposed changes? With that, I will say we have had a public hearing, Mr. Silvestri.
I'm sorry, I thought you were just addressing the audience, I guess I did have one question.
Well, we can discuss that.
We can discuss it when the legislation is presented.
We can discuss that in the portion, so with that, we'll close this public hearing, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, we'll consider that public hearing was held on the zoning code amendments which will be subject to ordinance number 2019-17, so we can further vet that, Mr. Silvestri, in new business. That brings us to unfinished business, first item, it'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, it's my understanding based on your representations, the last meeting that you would probably move to have this adopted, denies?
Correct.
Before I get to you, Resolution Number 2019-43, title needs to be read if you would.
Resolution Number 2019-043, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, as we've already approved the budgeted 2020 tax budget at previous council session, the second stage of the process is confirming with the county auditors the amounts required from general property tax approved by the Budget Commission in the county auditor's estimates. We all have a summary on Schedule A identifying the dollars and the percentages, it's consistent with prior years, I ask if you had any questions to reach out to our city administration and finance staff and seeing none, again, this is just part of the tax and budgeting process, by law, we have to have a vote by the third meeting in September, or the 3rd of September, that's this meeting, so it won't go through readings, I will, a motion to suspend the rules and a roll-out order count will be made, a vote will be made this evening.
And just verify, Mr. Dordia, there isn't much we can do other than say, okay, it looks correct, we'll approve it.
Right, our middle has hasn't changed, so that's a core thing.
And here's a note along those lines, we have up to a 10% millage ceiling and we're currently at 5.8 total in the various categories, the general fund, the fireman's fund and the police pension fund, and there is another category that if you exceed 10%, and I don't know, Andre, are there other municipalities that exceed the 10%?
So by law, if they had to have the vote.
Okay.
If they exceed...
Just a point of interest.
In order to exceed the 5.8 even?
No, 10, we could go to 10. Thank you, roll call vote, motion for roll call vote.
I need a second.
Oh, second.
I'll second that.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Yep.
Yeah, I did.
Motion to suspend the rules, second by Mr. Myers, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended, Mr. Ansel.
Yes, a motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 2019-43 passes, turn our attention to Resolution Number 2019-44, second reading, but Mr. Bastancic will be presenting it, but if you would, Ms. DePaulo, please read the title.
Resolution Number 2019-044, a resolution declaring it necessary to improve the streetscape along Liberty Street from Market Street East to the First Alley, the Southwest Quad, the Southeast Quad and the area along Liberty Street West of Market Street, South Side to the First Alley and to determine assessments for affected property owners and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours.
Thank you, as we talked about last meeting, this is required by the state of Ohio to have a resolution of necessity when there are public projects involving assessments and all this does is pretty much put the stamp of approval on the project by saying that we believe this is a necessary and proper project that will benefit the citizens of the City of Worcester. I kept it on first reading last week so that anyone affected by these assessments would have a little more time to voice their opinion. It was my intention today to go to the third and final on this because there is a timeline that we have to keep in order to get the project moving, but I also would like to point out that those who are property owners on Liberty and Market who will be assessed have already been talking to the administration, or I should say the other way around, the administration's already reached out to these individuals over the last several months, so there's been several months of time to understand what the assessments are, approximately what they may be and garner any objections, so if there are any questions, if there are no questions, I'd like to go to the third and final on this so we can keep the timeline.
Yes, Joel, do you have a question or you have a comment?
I was gonna say, they could still get...
Yeah, I was gonna get that, it could be an equalization. I'm with you, just give me a little time, I would have presented it. So, did you move it?
Yeah, I would like to move to take this to third and final.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancic, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
And the rules are suspended, I turn to you for...
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri, if you would please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-44 passes, flip the page to new business, we'll have the first reading of ordinance number 2019-17, it'll be presented by Mr. Sanders and despite, I think, what was listed, I think this is a three reading ordinance. So, if you would please read the title, Ms. DePaulo.
Ordinance Number 2019-17, an ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission and to amend to the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, as we discussed briefly in the public hearing, yes, we have a miscellaneous Planning and Zoning Code text amendments to chapters 1, or excuse me, chapters 1103, which is Administration and Decision Making Authorities, chapter 1105, which is Review Procedures, chapter 1109, which is Principal Use Regulations, chapter 1113, which is Accessory and Temporary Use Regulations, chapter 1115, which is Site Development Standards, chapter 1117, which is General Development Standards, chapter 1121, which is Open Space Standards, chapter 1123 is Landscaping and Buffering, 1125, Parking, Access and Mobility, 1127, Signage, and lastly, 1135, Definitions. Having reviewed this, since we've got the information last week and discussing this with Mr. Dutton, I will be leaving this on first reading this evening just to let the general public, if they have any concerns or questions with this, to have time to review this, but basically what we're looking at is, like you say, there's generally some rather innocuous changes, corrections, clarifications as you read through it, and most of it is, like you say, it's fairly, most of it is just to tidy up what was done previously. And with that, I'll leave the floor for any conversation. Mr. Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, I guess I had a couple of questions in Section 12, page 11 of the supplemental piece, under General Standards 1125.03, under location and parking in driveways, I guess I'd ask the question, first of all, were there some situations that led to this, I see that you're increasing the, you know, driveways located within 10 feet of the right-of-way, you know, having a maximum width of 25 feet and giving the zoning administrator the opportunity to make exceptions to that for the tapering of drives, it sounded like something quite specific, and then the second piece was, you know, why did we totally get rid of the Illustration 1125 instead of just updating that?
Yeah, and it looks like there's a lot of changes here, but it's a lot of rewording. Basically, the current code requires parking on a residential property to be 25 feet from the right-of-way, a lot of times houses are between 25 and 35 feet from the right-of-way, so that kind of prohibited any additional parking next to the driveway, so we had a lot of instances where we're getting variances, excuse me, or complaints from property owners that they couldn't expand their driveway, so that just reduces that from 25 to 10 and allows me to make an exception if it's tapering back to the driveway, so that's the gist of those changes.
Okay, so it's actually loosening that up a bit?
Yeah, yeah, so it will allow more people to expand their driveway to add an additional parking space.
So like a pull-off to the side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And then the graphic, I'm a big fan of graphics and codes, they help out a lot, but I was doing a lot of explaining to a lot of people about this and we've tried to revise it before and at some point, it's just not worth having it there, it's more harm than good, and in reality, the text is what matters, so we decided to get rid of that.
Okay.
I have a question, Andrew, I guess, given that I don't have the entire code in front of me, I'm wondering why, okay, so under number 12, Parking for Single Family and Two-Family Dwellings, we have General Standards marked as 1125.03, and then under section 14, the General Standards are also 1125.03, so it would be page 11 and page 14 of the document.
Yeah, so those are both just, so the first one would be section B, 1125.03B, and then later in the code...
Okay, so there, it's just a continual...
Yeah, just later in that section.
...section of General Standards, okay.
But page 12 does reference .04.
Yeah, so deleting that figure kind of triggered a little waterfall effect, so that's 1125A, so 1125B had to be made A, C had to be made B, so it was kind of a domino effect there where you're just correcting the lettering really.
Just the figure?
To reflect that change.
I was talking about the figure, I was talking about the actual figure, it seemed like it would be something different.
So really pages 12, 13, there's actually no substantive change, you're just reflecting...
Domino.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any questions from council?
Nope.
Just will, like I said, we'll let this stand for first reading and then if any questions come up, feel free to contact Mr. Dutton and we'll plan on barring any major questions or concerns from anybody until we've, we'll vote to approve it then, thank
Okay, well, consider ordinance 2019-17 is having its first reading, that brings us to ordinance number 2019-18, which is the one I was thinking about, it's really a three reading ordinance because I don't think this purchase was budgeted previously, so Ms. Warden will be presenting this, but before we get to you, Ms. Warden, I'll ask Ms. DePaulo to read the title.
Ordinance Number 2019-18, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke, so there was, there's been a recent opportunity for the city to acquire a downtown residential property, it's currently a duplex, I believe, located at 228 East Henry Street, the property was listed for sale for $60,000 and it happens to be adjacent to the community center downtown and also is in disrepair and would require extensive improvements, and for the residents who utilize the community center, it's also a bit of a visual impairment for, you know, safely exiting the alley way behind the community center, so the city has proposed to acquire this property and for the amount of $60,000 and then down the road, do some demolition, remove the building, the cost of that would be about $15,000 and an added $5,000 for environmental remediation to remove any environmental hazard that might exist, and then the city has also proposed that they will provide assistance to the residents of the property in finding housing because they will be asked to exit upon demolition, obviously, so this is a total of, what?
No, that's good, they're gonna have to leave.
$80,000 would be the city's operating costs, and this is, again, as President Biden-Dyke said, not budgeted, so I would ask that we keep this on first reading.
It's time of the essence here, or...
Don't we have a closing date this month?
We do have a closing date committed for the end of the month.
For the end of September?
End of September.
Okay, so...
But that's...
Well, I guess we're gonna go with it.
That was just a yes or no question, is it, is time of the essence?
You're getting lots of responses.
All the banter, I think the simple answer is yes.
One other clarification, so yes to that question and the question of budgeted, so we had some funds budgeted for actually completely milling and resurfacing a couple parking lots that we're not gonna do, our PPM decided previous to even knowing about this, that they could simply crack and seal, fill and seal that parking lot, so there's more than enough that we won't be spending, that we could use, so we don't have to appropriate money, we can use...
We don't have to appropriate money, but it wasn't budgeted for this particular...
Correct.
All I was saying, I wasn't getting into appropriation that Mr. Dordia's basically making, so that's all I was commenting because it was a single reading, but I think we really have to suspend the rules since it wasn't budgeted, so...
Okay, well then, I move to adopt ordinance...
You moved to suspend.
Oh, for Christ's sake, I haven't done this all year, I haven't done it all year, I'm out of practice.
That's all right, I make mistakes all the time, you were just getting ahead of yourself because you were excited about getting a duplex.
It's not.
It's not.
It's gonna be off of our role as a maintenance problem.
Right, so I move to place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second? Second by Mr. Cavan, would you please call the roll, Ms. DePaulo.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Rules are suspended, I'll look to you again there, Ms. Warren.
Okay, I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warren, second by Mr. Myers.
I have a question. I can second it first though.
Okay, and then I would go open it up for discussion, so if you second it...
I'll second it.
Mr. Myers agreed to second it, now further discussion, and Mr. Myers has a common Now, Mr., now, further discussion, and Mr. Myers has a common question or observation.
I noted that there's a $5,000 remediation in the budget. Have we done, or will we do a Phase One environmental?
Most likely not. Full Phase One will have an inspection for environmental hazards that may or may not exist, given the property's construction. If necessary, based on that analysis, then yes, we would proceed to Phase One. We may or may not end up spending that environmental remediation piece, that's...
But my concern, I guess, is based on one of the commercial properties that's uphill from this property. We could have more than $5,000 in remediation, depending on what we might find.
That, that would be possible, it's not anticipated.
Yeah, I think that's a lot of speculation, I mean, if we cross that road and get there...
The bank loan would be required because of the adjacent properties, but just because we're paying cash, we don't have to, but I just wondered if we planned to.
And if there's, and if there is something from another property, then it's, it wouldn't be us, it would be that other property to be responsible for that remediation.
Okay, good.
Any...
Yeah, I just have a, just a quick question for my amusement, I guess. I noticed in reading that there was, they were saying that quick passage to this would give us a better price on the demolition. I'm just curious how that, how that works. I understand how you get it passed, something to pass, and it's been here for paving and stuff, but, you know.
As far as the early demolition goes, we're entering into the winter season, and typically, if we can have earlier confirmation that we'll be moving forward in a certain direction, we can obtain better quotes when we're entering that season versus the laying, we begin in the spring, prices begin to go up. Demolition in particular is substantially cheaper in the winter seasons.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019 dash 18 passes. We have the first reading on resolution 2019 dash 47. This will be presented by Mr. Bestancic, it's slated for three readings. If you would, Mr. Paul, please read the title.
Resolution number 2019 oh four seven, a resolution appointing an assessment equalization board for the downtown streetscape Phase Two project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bestancic, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Now that we've approved that in necessity, the resolution of necessity for the Phase Two of the streetscape project, we need to appoint an assessment equalization board, which will consist of three community members, and the names are Bob, I'm gonna butcher this last name, Metz, okay, Bob Metz, Steve Webster, and Jennifer Reynolds. And what these three citizens will do, will take any issues, if a property owner feels they are being charged more than their fair share of their assessment, they can bring this up to the equalization board, who will try to mediate the situation and make a recommendation. And eventually, if there is a, I believe, it would only come before council if they decide to take a lesser, the mediation board says it takes a lesser amount or recommends a lesser amount, then it would come to the council to approve that lesser amount, is that correct?
Any objections?
Any objections would come before us. So this is pretty much just a mediation board for those who are affected with the property assessments of this project. Any questions?
I have a question, just, just because I'm new to this whole process of the mediation board. Is this something where they hold a public hearing, they publish in the newspaper, or is this something that has to be requested by the property owners?
So, we will not have an equalization board if we don't get any objections, but what will happen immediately tomorrow is, you know, that assessment roll, and we have letters that will go out, Roger will send out, to all the property owners with those preliminary assessments, explaining the process to them, giving them the opportunity to submit objections, and then, actually, we're gonna hand-deliver all the letters as well, just to make sure everybody gets them. And then, as soon as, if we get any back, then we will convene a board and let everybody know they have the opportunity, whether you file an objection or not, you can come and speak. They will, they will then, the board will listen to that. They usually, you know, retire to executive session, discuss that, come back, make a, announce what their recommendations are, then prepare reports that will get submitted to council, and finally approve or disapprove.
What's the timeline on, if they object? Is it 30 days, or, once the, once the letters are delivered, they, there is a timeline?
There is a time frame, I forget what I did.
I think it's 30 days to send in their objection.
Yeah.
We're just trying to be proactive here in case we need it to save time.
Joel, have we always been preemptive in establishing the equalization board?
Usually, we wait, you do the resolution necessity, we send out the proposed assessments, and that's usually the first time the property owners even hear of the assessments, it would have been after. We were proactive this time, ahead of time. And then, since we did meet with all of them, you know, a couple of them did express some concerns, so we know there's going to be some.
Okay.
So if we were to wait, it would actually be another month, probably, between dates and timeframes, so this actually gains us a month in the process, going ahead and appointing the board when we know there's probably some coming.
I thought for sure I remembered waiting, getting some responses back on one of the projects, and establishing it then, but, sounds good.
That was Roger's idea to be proactive.
Good job, guys.
Just one of the many values you bring to the City of Worcester. Thank you.
So, what do you want to do?
I would propose we take this to third and final.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bestancic, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. I look to you.
I propose to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? We're just appointing people to serve if there's objections, and thank them for volunteering if they, if there are no objections. Seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019 dash 47 passes. That brings us to the final piece of legislation, resolution number 2019 dash 48. It'll be presented by Mr. Sylvester, and it is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Sylvester, I'll ask once again, Mr. Paul, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2019 oh four eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs, to accept and apply such funds if awarded, and to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sylvester, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. As our city engineer, Roger Kobelarsik, was proactive with the last piece of legislation, so he is with this. Although he had to pedal a little harder to get it on tonight's agenda, we appreciate his efforts there. So there are a few water lines that, we did some checking, and were able to verify that at least one of these streets has a water line that is 80 years old, roughly 80 years old. So these are water lines from, on Washington Street and McKinley Street, so those are known affectionately as our, a couple of our presidential streets. So on Washington and McKinley, from Bowman to University, and then on West Henry Street, from its intersection with Grant Street, and its intersection with Columbus, all the way through there. So, in total, over 5,500 linear feet of 8-inch ductile iron water line, that's gonna come with water services and fire hydrants along the way. There have been 13 breaks on the West Henry Line, and coincidentally, 10 breaks for each of the lines on Washington and McKinley. So, the total project is $1,100,000, and Roger would like to apply for Ohio Public Works Commission grant funds to the tune of $400,000 of that. So this is simply the resolution to apply for, to authorize the mayor to apply for, and submit application for these funds. If there are no further questions, I would ask that we suspend the rules and get this passed tonight.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sylvester, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bestancic. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended, Mr. Sylvester?
I move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sylvester, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further questions or discussions?
Quick clarification, I understand it's just to accept money, but is that water line only, does that include any sidewalk, or is it going to, are you filling in any of the ditches there?
No, just the water line.
Does that run in the street?
The water, yeah, it'll be more likely in the street. We haven't done any design work yet, but chances are it'll be in the street.
Okay. Just curious if it would be any, if you'd be able to tie any sidewalk into that, but probably not.
Along the same lines, Roger, will this result in repaving of the entire street where the repairs will be done?
Not with this project, but actually, we wanted to repave both of those streets next year.
Both, Washington and McKinley?
Yes, until we looked at the water lines, we want to be proactive and replace that water line before we actually repave it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no...
Roger, hopefully, we'll get the funds, but if we don't, will we continue with the project either way?
Well, that'll be up to our finance director. Any other discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2019 dash 48 passes. At this point in time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Sanders to go into executive session, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to go into executive session?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
We will be in executive session, and off the record... Out of executive session, Mr. Bestancic did. Is there a second?
Second.
The whole row?
Everyone.
Yeah. Pick one, okay, Ms. Warden. All right, let's call the roll, Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Kevin?
Here.
Mr. Bestancic?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
I think I will find it, move it up. All right, and then, what do we have to do? Press record.
Should I edit this part out, or leave it?
Mike, I think you're going right now, it's live.
Yeah, but this, this isn't on. Where's press record, or...
I've never...
Side button on there?
I did, I think it's live right now, it's recording on the little unit.
Yeah, but that is not...
That's okay. Lynn said it's fine if you don't get a recording on this, it's just like...
All right, well, we have voted to come out of executive sessions, so that brings us right to miscellaneous, and we'll start out with Mr. Sylvester.
Nothing to add this evening, Mr. President, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Myers?
Nothing to add tonight, I think that the census information was very interesting, and that was a great presentation that we got earlier.
Mr. Bestancic?
Nothing more to add.
Mr. Kevin?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Ansel?
Go Browns.
And Ms. Warden?
I just liked, and she's gone, but I'd like to wish the best to Tammy Moser and her future ventures, and welcome Jack to our meetings going forward, thank you.
And Mr. Ansel?